Tammy, do you want to call a roll?
Counselor Kesar.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoy.
Here.
Counselor Osig.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett. Here. Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin with a little bit of business here. Counselor Anderson.
I move to add Ashley Schweickart to the slate of candidates for the Planning Commission. I'm sure I mispronounced that.
No, he's all right.
Okay.
Second by McCoy.
Yeah, just a little comment.
Go ahead and speak to it. And then, Tom, I'm going to just -- we're going to have a brief discussion. I'll ask that those members of the Boards and Commissions Committee comment as well, if you'd like to, if you have any concerns.
I was not present at -- I am a member of the Boards and Commission meeting. I was not able to be present at that meeting. After the meeting, I had a discussion with the mayor and suggested that we add a fifth name. And then I spoke also with Counselors McCoy and Nanki, who are the other two members of that commissions, and they agreed. And so it was an oversight that it wasn't added in before today.
Do either of you want to comment? I think that summarizes it really well. It really was an oversight. So I'm going to ask, then, that the council approve adding Ashley Schweickart to the list. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passes. Okay, then we want to invite down David Barber, Michael Hughes, Chi Yun Ventura, and Jerry Watson. And Ashley Schweickart. Counselors, I can go either one at a time, starting with number one, or you can raise your hand and go first to ask questions of the panel. Why don't we begin -- yeah, we'll go backwards. Why don't we have each of you introduce yourselves, so we know who we're hearing from, and we'll go from there. Go ahead. Ashley?
Hi.
Yep. Yeah. Use your microphones.
Hi, nice to meet you all. My name is Ashley Schweickart. I live in South Salem. My husband and I relocated here about two years ago for jobs and affordability and to raise a family. So I have a 16-month-old daughter, and I work as an affordable housing developer. And my husband is a professor at Willamette University. So I definitely am very excited about the fact that there is a vacancy on the Planning Commission, as I feel like my lifelong calling is to work in planning and development. And I would love to be a part of this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Watson. I live in West Salem. I've lived in Salem since 1962. Seen a lot happen here, and I've appeared before this body before. I'm a retired architect, and in that capacity, I've had a great deal of experience in planning. In fact, I did my terminal project at the University of Oregon in city planning. And thank you for allowing me to speak to you today.
Great, thank you. Chi?
Mayor Bennett, fellow counselors. My name is, for the record, my name is Chi Yun Ventura. I live in Ward Eight, recently located from King City, where I previously served on city council there, and have 15, over 15 years of transportation experience, startup co-founder, and I also teach part-time at the Willamette MBA program.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Hughes, and I've -- we've lived in Salem for 18 years, I guess. And I recently, a couple of years ago, retired from Garmin AT. I started working when it was still UPS, and finally got retired. Since then, I've got time on my hands. I've gotten involved in Strong Towns, a lot of downtown Main Street, Salem Main Street, and various other organizations. I've been real excited about the changes in Salem over the last few years. It's really growing and starting to blossom, so I want to be a part of that.
Great.
And whoever gets selected, I would like to work with them, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Hi, my name's David Barber. I live in the unincorporated area. I moved to Salem eight years ago. Planning and land use is pretty much in my DNA. This is what I've been involved, as a community activist and also as a career. I've been on the Planning Commission in a city that's similar to the size of Salem, called Escondido, California. I worked as a planning advisor to the San Diego County Board of Supervisors for eight years, which is equivalent to your commissioners. I worked in developing with the US government in the state of California something called the Multiple Species Conservation Plan. I was directly involved in negotiating deals with the private sector to preserve thousands of acres of open space into permanent conservation and parkland use in San Diego County. And I also served on the Planning Commission in Mill City when I first retired here in Oregon. Thank you.
I was once on the Planning Commission in Gates, so.
Oh, were you?
Yes.
Were you?
Many, many, many years.
We're brothers.
Yeah. Created the biggest urban growth boundary on earth, I think, for that little town. Okay, let's begin with questions. Counselor Lewis, why don't we begin with you?
Well, I think this is for everyone, so if you want to start, we can go from left to right. First question, the Salem Planning Commission acts as an advisory commission to the city council with a broad scope of concern in promoting the growth and orderly development of the city of Salem. Based on this statement, explain what you see as the role of the Planning Commission.
Well, as someone who has sat in front of planning commissions, both as a developer but also as an advocate, as the president of my neighborhood association where I came from in Austin, Texas, I would say that the way that I understand the Planning Commission's roles and responsibilities are twofold. One is to help the city staff with both short and long-range planning that will help focus and direct growth and development in a way that will actually improve the lives of their citizens. And the second is looking at the land use codes, the development regulations, whether they apply to an individual landowner or business that is looking to change something about a single property, or if they're working with city staff on the overhaul of the entire zoning code, and thinking about how thoughtful but innovative solutions there are to accommodate future growth in a way that is reflected in what the citizens want, as seen by the city council's direction.
Thank you.
That's kind of a loaded question.
I just read it.
I -- planning needs to take a look at the whole, and Salem's been doing a good job with that, especially with the urban growth boundary. They're infilling areas, they're keeping the urban growth boundary to a reasonable size. One thing that I can see that they might not be doing well is they're not compacting the center as much as sometimes some of the outside. There are some major apartment complexes right on the edge of the urban growth boundary. This, to me, seems to be a, will be a problem, because, first of all, it brings traffic from all over the city to that point, rather than concentrating it in the center. At least, that's what I was taught in my planning courses at U of O. I think I'll just stop.
Okay, thank you. Chi?
Mayor Bennett, fellow counselors. Other than what's spelled out in chapter six, section 6.040, my personal belief in the Planning Commission seat that I'm seeking is coordination. I really believe in measure twice and cut once. So if it is an exclusionary zone that there's an applicant looking into and making sure that we're not setting a weird precedence if there are some exclusionary zoning that we're doing, but making sure that we create, especially a sensitive subject for Ward Eight, is definitely transportation and crossing that bridge. There are zoning, I feel, money left on the table on the west side, because I understand there's commercial property that's not properly used right now, and that could be more effectively used on that side of town. But really, just coordinating and, from the advising side of how to advise council, I will say that probably on this panel of candidates, I have the least amount of urban planning experience. My advising comes from my experience serving as the committee person to advise Washington Counties CDBG and home grants. So weighing in the affordable housing issues is also part of that planning piece. But really, just looking at transportation, so that's where, I guess that's where my background is, is the economic development side, the housing side, and then the transportation, making sure there's all options available to make it accessible and easy to use.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, I agree that we do need more density downtown, rather than a lot of suburban single-family development, which we've been doing for years now. But I think the Planning Board's responsibility is to act as the advisory board for the LCDC, for the city. And for the most part, our zoning seems to be working. Occasionally, it needs a tweak, and I think that's kind of the job of the Planning Commission, is to weigh requests for changes and adjustments to be made to meet the goals of the LCDC.
Thank you.
All right. I see our role as planning commissioners in advising the city council to ensure that we are following, implementing, and coordinating the vision and the goals of the general plan or comprehensive plan, and that we should be reviewing each application individually or each project or policy proposed changes on a basis to make sure that they are, in fact, following those goals that have been set forth in the comprehensive or general plan. As an individual, as I look at personal land use applications for zone changes, conditional use permits, et cetera, I like to look at land use compatibility with the surrounding and existing residences, see how they affect the aesthetics or any other impacts they could have on the neighborhood or the community at large, to see how that might affect property values of the existing residents, and to make sure that, as we grow, we're assuring that we have the public facilities needed to serve that growth and recreational opportunities to accommodate that growth.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Kesar, you want to do number two?
All right. Imagine that you are on the Planning Commission. You receive a report for a hearing, and after reading it, you are in agreement with the applicant, and it fits your philosophy on development. During the public hearing, you receive information from the opposing side that soundly makes the case for denying the application. How would you resolve the conflict between the two positions?
Yeah, we'll start at your end. Thank you, you go first. Go ahead, Jerry.
I would outline in detail my thinking and reasoning on how I came to an earlier conclusion leaning towards approval of the project, but then I would balance that, if not oversee it, with the information that's been presented to me, which shows my reason and my conclusions that, in fact, my vote has shifted. In fact, as my experience in Planning Commission, I have actually stated in the past a position where I was going to vote one way on the application, and after hearing my fellow planning commissioners explain their reasoning, I've actually grabbed the microphone and said, "Actually, based on A, B, C, and D, I see the logic, and I hadn't considered those opinions, and I've actually changed my position on the issue."
Yes, I have ideas of how things ought to be. The main criteria I would think should be considered is whether it goes along with the comprehensive plan, which is designed for long-term growth. If, at the same, by the same token, a landowner wants to use his property for a certain way, he should be entitled to that unless it goes against the zoning and the comprehensive plan. I'm open to making modifications, if necessary, but only if they would serve the good of the city as a whole. But, yeah, I'd be willing to listen to both sides, and my main criteria is that it's a long-term benefit to the city as a whole, so.
Mayor Bennett, fellow counselors, my answer would be actually to ask staff to delay the vote by one meeting, because if one side was able to show up, maybe the supporters were not made aware or were unable to attend. I'd want to hear the support side if the opposition was the one present, and I would take, and I would ask staff to take the vote at the next, the subsequent meeting.
Okay.
The question sounds to me as if, will you get an opinion and stick to it? And my answer is no. I believe that you need to listen to both sides, and if the other side comes in with a good solution or a good reason for doing it their way, then I would certainly look at both sides very carefully. Thank you.
So I would have to say, my experience as a neighborhood association president, I think speaks to this a little well, in that when you have a lot of very passionate people in the room with disparate opinions, then you have to synthesize those different perspectives and find a path forward, right? So I think that the first thing I would do is turn to those folks in the room who are the experts, which are our city staff. I mean, those are the individuals who have been working tirelessly on these particular issues and have done all the research in the background, and so, you know, gathering that knowledge that they have available, as well as our fellow planning commissioners, and the knowledge that they bring to the table, I think is the first thing. Also, looking at the alignment with the general plan and seeing, you know, those plans were not made in a vacuum. They were made with a lot of city participation, civic participation, of a lot of homeowners, business owners. So those plans, you know, they carry the weight of that engagement and should be thought of as our guiding force. And then I guess the final thing was, I would say, in making my decision was to weigh the suitability of the consequence of that decision as to whether to approve or deny. So how the general plan, how the zoning code is appropriately aligned with the case is something that I would look into before making my vote.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cook?
So I guess we'll start in the middle, then? So how would you?
Go both ways.
I'm just, is that right?
Go ahead.
Okay. So how would you say Salem has performed with regard to its land use, transportation systems, and open space planning?
Mayor Bennett, fellow counselors, I, as a brand-new Salemite, we moved our city, we moved our family to the city July of, this most recent July. I say, as a mom of two toddlers, we have excellent access to natural resources. Our park system, our trail system are superb. I see lots of amenities and different services that cater to all ages all over town. There's not heavily concentrated in any particular part of town. I do say the greatest opportunity for improvement will be transportation planning and desegregating large employer areas, meaning, I just feel like there's just so many large employers that pull so many commuters downtown, that if we are able to somehow spread some of the agencies, particularly the state's health systems around the city, so that way, then, it's more accessible to different pockets of town, and better leverage our existing infrastructure, creating less of a, this really weird pulsation, you know, everybody heading into town, and then all of a sudden, it's heading out of town. I think if we can coordinate those services and scatter them about town better, that'll be more helpful. And did I miss any of the questions?
I think it's open-ended, so. Take your pick, gentlemen.
Salem is good, but they, Salem also has some issues. Part of the problem, I think the Planning Commission can do something about, part of the problem other entities are going to have to deal with. It's going to have to be a cooperative thing. We definitely need more transit. Hopefully, we'll be getting some money for that pretty soon, for chariots and adding some service there. A big part of the problem is we've got two highways that go through the middle of town, and people going from, on 22 from the coast to Bend have to go through the middle of Salem, and that's causes congestion. All the development that's been going on, the single-family development on the outskirts of town, is causing lots of single-occupant vehicle trips to and from town every day. The state, I don't think the state's going to be able to move a lot of their buildings, but they might be able to do a little bit of flexibility as far as the hours that people are coming and going to work. But I think congestion is the big issue right now that we're having, and there are ways to deal with it, and planning can have a part in that, so.
Okay, as I understand the question, I'm just going to simply put it that I wouldn't have moved to Salem if I didn't think that the leadership in Salem and the planning of Salem is moving in the right direction. So I want to be a part of that and to ensure that these goals that have been set forth are ready, and projects that I'm enthusiastic about, like the State Street project, which I think is exciting, are carried through efficiently and appropriately. And as I said earlier, I would like to make sure that we have the public infrastructure and the recreational opportunities as we grow for our future growth. And, well, transportation is an obvious problem that needs to be addressed, and I'm sure will be addressed. I do share the concern about the intensity of the urbanization being developed on the urban boundaries, and I'd like to see that more concentrated in the interior.
Ashley?
I think that the question about land use, transportation, and open space planning is one of interconnectivity of those three, and how you think about them holistically, and then you break them down by local community. So I guess what I would say is that I agree, having a toddler, I can definitely say that the open space planning seems to be just exemplary in terms of, you know, what you can always see just, you know, biking or driving down the street. I would say the things that maybe could be room for improvement, that speak to that interconnectivity, are corridor planning. I know that that's something that the Planning Commission is currently working very hard on, and I think that needs to continue, because if you're able to appropriately zone for growth along corridors, then I think the ripple effects you have on that are beneficial to things like transportation and your other land uses that spring forth from those main corridors that folks are accessing throughout the city. So I would say that I see things improving, just in the last two years that I've lived here and getting to know the city. I love the fact that there's a bicycle planning effort that's underway, that's, you know, helping bike and pedestrian transportation, and really building that up. I also see, it's great that there is a homeless task force for downtown, because I think that in looking at housing options for all income levels, you have to think about your most vulnerable in your community. So I see, you know, recent efforts that are moving us in the right direction, and I would say that let's just keep in mind the interconnectivity of all of those planning goals as one.
Thank you.
Let's face it, we're dealing with things as they are, not how we wish they could be. And with a good plan, we can maybe push it a little bit toward the way we wish it could be. I think the park system is fantastic, especially along the riverfront and the carousel and the bridge to nowhere, and all of the other improvements that have gone on in the last five or six years are just fantastic. My wife and I start in West Salem, walk across the railroad bridge and up through the park and across the bridge to nowhere and back, and that's really a fun thing to do. There are some other areas that I wish we could have as good a planning on, and I would hope that I would have an opportunity to be involved in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Let's start with Mr. Hughes and move to his left on the answer to this question. Please describe what mixed use means to you as far as a planning designation.
Mixed use is a combination of, well, generally, it's thought of as a combination of commercial and residential use in the same building, for want of a better term. I see it as sort of a fix for the type of zoning that we have, that's totally functional, functional-based zoning, and mixed use kind of helps us get around that. It also adds to the ability to have a little more densification near the inner parts of the city. I am, I'm a Jane Jacobs fan from way back, and she lived in New York City, and in New York, people look out the windows and they see people on the street at all hours of the day and night, and that's what makes it for a healthy, vibrant city. And I'd like to see Salem kind of go in that direction. And mixed use is one way that we can accomplish that, I think, is to have some small commercial retail uses, and maybe the people that are running the store can live upstairs, and they don't have to make trips across town all the time. It's an ideal way to go, I think.
Okay, mixed use, in the positive and appropriate sense, would be to have neighborhoods that are designed to have both a mix of residential and the type of commercial that could serve those residents, and perhaps others that would be attracted due to other features that might be included in the zoning as a way to spend perhaps an afternoon. It wouldn't be It wouldn't be what I would consider more like spot zoning, where you would try to mix a use that would be incompatible. For example, to build an industrial or heavy commercial use in the middle of an existing residential area, or perhaps to include high-density multifamily use in a neighborhood that's already zoned for like half-acre homes. But to create a, well, use the State Street project, I see that as going to be an ideal location for mixed use.
I would say that, as others have mentioned, mixed use as a planning designation can either be the mix of uses in a single development within a parcel of a land, having multiple uses within that parcel, or having an entire, you know, zoning area that is flexible in its use. I would say that, you know, ideally, what the allowance of a mixed use planning designation can provide is allowing communities to access amenities without having to get into their vehicles, or to minimize the number of vehicular trips by providing that access to those amenities close by. So a mixed use designation, in its most ideal, would provide the ability for all of our, you know, single and multifamily neighborhoods to have commercial uses close to them.
Salem is not New York City. In fact, Salem, I'm a fan of Jane Jacobs also. I studied her when I was in the university. I don't think that's going to work here. We have, over time, if you can, if you will look back maybe 20 years, downtown was dead. There was nothing there. Five o'clock, you rolled the sidewalks up and everybody went home. It's beginning to change. Those second floors are beginning to become occupied with housing, and that's what it's going to take to make it mixed use. The chairs and umbrellas and benches along the street, they draw people to them. And you can go downtown Salem on a nice, warm afternoon, and there are people there. It wasn't that way 20 years ago. So we're going in the right direction. We just need some additional planning, some additional work to make it more vibrant. I'd like to say, since I'm the last liar, I'd like to relate a little story. Years ago, when I was young and stupid, I was on the Salem Sign Committee. And staff decided that all these overhanging signs that Salem had needed to come down. Now, this was back in the late '60s, early '60s, excuse me. So, over a period of time, they removed all the overhanging signs, the flashing signs, the marquees, the theater marquees, and all of a sudden, they even took Van's horse down. I don't know if you remember Van's horse. But Van's horse was a full-scale palomino in fiberglass, and it stood out over his, in front of his store on commercial. Well, poor Van came to the Sign Committee and says, hey, that horse is my business. That's where people come because they see that horse. They're driving down the street and they see the horse. Van had an outdoor store, he sold cowboy gear and that sort of thing. Square dancers used to go there to buy our stuff. Anyway, so we compromised with Van. We mounted his horse vertically on the side of the building. That isn't the stupidest thing you ever saw. But that's where what happened to Salem. And if you had gone away in the middle '60s and come back in the middle '70s, Salem was sterile. We're getting away from it, we're working toward it, but it's going to take a lot more work. Thanks a lot.
Mayor Bennett, fellow councilors.
I think mixed use, at the core of it, is a great idea for the very reasons, the pros you've heard from, for. I think it's a double-edged sword, though, because, like I stated in my application, I'm a time traveler. The future's right up the street from us, and I'm often the one that lends the equity and inclusion voice to a lot of rooms. The reason why I say it's a double-edged sword is in comes a lot of developers with money signs in their eyes, and we've seen what happened in Portland. Division, Mississippi, St. John's, mixed use comes in, and yes, it does do all of those great things for the urban cores, but it also gentrifies a lot of the local residents. So I just say, you got to temper that with reasonable expectation that that will happen, and you use it where you absolutely know, especially the dense downtown urban core areas, but be very careful of letting the mixed use, the core of the goodness of it, attack some of the other smaller, less diverse communities as far as like housing affordability goes.
Councilor Hughes, councilors, we've got a couple written questions left, but I'd like to just give a couple minutes. If any of you have questions for either individuals or the group that are not on the list, something that is going on in your mind you'd like to ask about. Anything in particular of any of the individuals or the group?
Mayor Bennett.
Councilor Cook.
Planning Commission does meet a lot. I just want to make sure that you've all thought about the commitment and are making sure that you'll be able to commit. I know the applications say that 70% of the meetings, I believe. Is that something that you've given a great deal of thought to in submitting the application? And they're not short meetings?
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got a wide level of experience here and also a wide level of time living in our fair city. So I'm wondering, in just a sentence or two, could each of you offer your views as to how your time in the city, this city will affect your service on the Planning Commission? And I think we'll start with Mr. Watson, who hasn't had a question yet.
I am very happy that my wife supports me because we own a place at the beach, and we spend about half of our time there. We've been spending like Monday through Wednesdays at the beach every day, every week. Well, we compromised. If this happens and the Planning Commission meets every other week, I'll be spending more time at the beach every other week. So yes, I can, I can do that. That's not a problem.
Well, perhaps I didn't explain my question. I'm interested in, you've lived here a long, long time, some of the people here have lived a lot less. I would just be interested as to how you feel, each of you, the time you have spent in the city, is that a detriment or a positive aspect of you being on the Planning Commission? And we're running out of time. I'm sorry I even asked this question, but as short as you can, please.
Okay, I'm still here. I think it's getting better, and I'd like to see it get a lot better.
Yeah, I think that, you know, being honest, it probably is a little bit of both. My short tenure here in Salem is probably both an asset and a drawback because I think as an asset, it would be something that I can bring the experiences of being engaged with other planning commissions, other neighborhood associations, and in other communities across this country to see how they came up with ways of solving problems. And I think that being new to Salem, I hope is an asset in that I can bring a pair of fresh eyes and not getting too bogged down by, you know, previous tensions. However, I think that I certainly hope that the city staff and other planning commissioners can apprise me of any experiences that they have had that really, you know, are the reason why our general plans and our specific plans are the way they are.
I wouldn't have come to apply to be on the Planning Commission when I first moved here for two reasons. One is because I would have been so fresh and new, I really wouldn't have had the feel or the understanding of the city and its needs and goals. After eight years, I do feel like I'm a part of the fabric. I do have a strong feeling for the city. I do see this as both the future for myself and my children who live here. Another reason, to be honest with you, is why I wouldn't have been involved. I actually moved here to get better medical care for my wife, who has multiple sclerosis, and my child who has autism. Those are no longer issues that I have to deal with. So I have, being retired, I have much more free time. And why would I want to be involved? I kind of, my philosophy in life is I have two families. My most immediate, important family, of course, is my natural family, but I'm one of those people that believes that it takes a village. And my second family is my community. And I believe it's even a moral obligation for me to be involved in working on the improvements and the betterment of my community, and that's why I like to get involved.
When we first moved to Salem, I agree that the streets rolled up at 5:30, and that was it downtown. It was dead. We looked for a place to live downtown or near downtown, and there was nothing available. That's changed. In the last few years, I've seen that change. The city's opened up, it's growing, it's becoming vibrant, and I'd like to be part of that. And I think we need more incremental, small-scale development rather than huge projects that are, you know, condos that people can't afford. We need more affordable housing, if not downtown or near downtown, at least along transit routes so that people can get in and out of town easily. But I think the way that we need to go is more on a smaller-scale incremental-type development.
Mayor Bennett, fellow councilors, one of my main motivations for running for this seat is Salem, for some reason, reminds me a lot of Portland when I first moved there in the '90s. There's this sense of community that frankly Portland lost. I spent 25 years in Portland, and I got fed up with the loss of the community there, so I chose to move to King City. And over three years, I saw King City grow from 3,500 to 5,000, and right before I moved here, we're working on the urban growth boundary, the URA Title XI Concept Plan. That would take that up to 10,000, but it also helps bring diversity on the economic development front, which would make for a bedroom community be able to access taxes from commercial developments that we had ran out of, frankly, being a bedroom community. So with that said, I've only been here since July, but I've got plugged in right away, started attending my neighborhood association meetings and transportation, Transit Board meetings, et cetera. So I feel like fresh eyes would lend itself, and also grounded on the fact that I've experienced growth to the detriment of losing that sense of community. I do everything that I can to grow and coordinate the growth so that we don't lose it.
Great, very good. We will be deciding, we actually vote, we'll do it a little later in the meeting. I want to thank you all very much. You're a very impressive panel. And we will, we only have one opening tonight. We have openings on a very regular basis, so we will be keeping all of your applications on file and expect to see you again if you're not chosen. We will be glad if you decide to withdraw your application, just let us know, but otherwise I hope all of you will stay in the mix. This turns over fairly rapidly on the Planning Commission, so all of you, please stay involved. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Why does it turn over rapidly? Why does it? Yeah.
Commissioner Kaser. Commissioner Anderson.
Lively.
Commissioner Nakey.
Here.
Chair McCoyd.
Here.
Commissioner Osid. Commissioner Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kiki-doki. Don't have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Any public comment? Nope? Nobody has signed up? Anybody want to address the Housing Authority of the City of Salem? Speak now, or you don't get to do it this evening? Okay, moving right along. Vice Chair Lewis, you have motion for me on the consent calendar?
Yes, I move a passage of the consent calendar.
Second.
Andy had a word.
Vice Chair Lewis.
I only have two items on the consent calendar. One is the minutes from the January 8th committee meeting, and then also one resolution. This is for the, for local innovation and tax fast-track program to apply for $1.7 million, no interest deferred payment, from the Housing Authority and Community Services to provide affordable housing at 4107 Fisher Road Northeast.
And Andy, do you have something you want to say to this, to this issue?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I put my paper together, and I went back today and found out with the help of the zoning folks that this property can only carry 35 units, and in the report it said 38. So I just wanted to mention that to you all. My mistake, apology.
The move by Chair Lewis and seconded by Member Kaser to approve the consent calendar. Any questions for Andy? I've got one. Andy, why don't you explain to the folks here what a lift funding is?
It stands for Fast Track Program, Local Initiative and Fast Track Program. So if you've been in this business for a while, you know it takes a lot of time if a public agency is funding you, a lot, a lot of due diligence, right? So Oregon Housing created this plan through the, I guess it was two years ago, and only one of these have come out of the ground, and that was a Mountain West, 188 up on Portland Road. But Oregon Housing has changed a lot. They've shed a lot of the bureaucracy of the program, and this is a program that we really, there's no payments, there's no debt. Really, the way this program works is you have to be in the program for 20 years, and after that 20 years, if you go another 20 years and you go to up to 40 years, you don't have anything to pay anybody anything back. And that's what they're trying to incentivize people to leave affordable housing in the long term rather than taking it out. And that's really, it's a great program. I think it's the easiest application, I can say this, the easiest application that we've done since I've been here. So that's a good thing for me.
Well, we're all happy for you, doing a great job. And it's $1.7 million, so it's significant. And it's $1.7 million, so it's a significant loan. So we've got the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And seeing no more business, I call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem adjourned.
Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for February 26th to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Kaser.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Also.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoy.
Here.
Counselor Osid.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett. Here. All right. Counselor McCoy, do you have additions?
I move approval of additions to the agenda.
Second.
We've got a revision to the agenda that cleans up some reporting on one of the issues, item 7.1A, revised the ward, the counselor, and the neighborhood information. That's it.
That's it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Any counsel or city manager comment? Counselor McCoy.
Because I was very fortunate enough, Mr. Mayor, to have you appoint me to the 100-day Challenge Committee here that gathered in the fall. It was a group of folks basically working up -- they were brought together by our Rural Continuum of Care Group on a HUD challenge and funded partly by HUD. And basically, the challenge, they brought a bunch of the -- most of the agencies that deal with the homeless together, and the leaders, working in a one-day seminar, which I attended, selected a challenge, and it was youth homelessness. And it was specifically 12 to 18 in our community, youth homelessness. And that the challenge they undertook was in 100 days to take 150 youths in our community that are homeless and take them out of that situation. And so as part of this, they had an event about a week ago where 150 people showed up. They had a band with the lead singer was from the Salem Police Department, so he had a bunch of his cohorts there cheering him on. And they had homeless youths, both that were homeless and had been homeless, speaking to the folks that were assembled. It was quite an event, very, very good event. And halfway through the challenge, they've assisted 57 homeless people or homeless youths in our neighborhood. And these are 12 to 18. These are not, we're talking, you know, teenagers, basically. Either got them reunited or into a shelter, and they've now struck an agreement with two youth homeless shelters, the Jackson Street Projects in Albany, where they're going to start placing our homeless here, and they've agreed to take them on when they can. So they're well on their way to taking care of 150 homeless youth in this, in our community in 100 days, which is a lot of ball, and they're really doing it. They're rocking and rolling. It's fun to watch them. So it was a good deal, and I enjoyed it.
Thank you very much, Counselor, for your work on this. Anyone else? Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a thanks to the staff for the weather that didn't come this last time. I know we were ready to go, salting, getting things prepared. And also, just appreciation for the work that is being done on transportation. Quite a few of the neighbors in our neighborhood need to use the bike paths or sidewalks, pedestrian paths, for motorized carts, for walkers. And coming out of the interviews that we've done, I just really appreciate the attention to that and maintaining ways for people to get around in multiple methods during snow and ice when that comes.
Very good. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and being from the Midwest, we always kept the snow shovel inside so that you could dig out from the drifts, didn't have to worry about that earlier. Kind of on that same day, though, I worked the warming center at 3:00 in the morning on President's Day, and I wanted to do a shout-out to First Congregational Church for opening up their facility. They also have an artapati in their parking lot, so we've had a lot of discussion on that, so I wanted to give them thank you for that element as well. And then it's fascinating, as I continue to speak with folks who come in for the night, a lot of them have some kind of an income, just not enough, which goes back to the affordable housing piece. There was a vet whose disability didn't pay for enough. He's also diabetic. So 5:00 in the morning, he's walking to McDonald's just to deal with his food intake needs. So I'd like to work with the Housing Authority and see if we can move him up on the list.
Well, great. Excellent. Excellent. Anyone else? Counselor McCoy.
You've also gave me the great honor of sitting on the council's police facility review.
I'm just working you like a renter.
No.
That's what happens when you retire.
Does everybody recognize that? Yeah. And I think it's, you know, as the progress begins, it's sort of interesting. The actual work is now going, the demolition crews showed up on Friday. There's a fence around it now. I know the police and the fire department practiced on those buildings over the weekend. The police were practicing, I guess, breaching, pull-down doors. The fire department was practicing breaching holes in the roof. So even our, you know, our public safety staff was helping with the demolition, but it's going to be underway now here as we move forward. And so first steps.
Did they do any of those bombs? They did some bombs Kaser and I heard about quite a bit.
They didn't fess up to any bombs.
No flashbangs or anything, huh? Very good. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So you can see that you have your third-string city manager today. The first stringer is in Hawaii on vacation, and the second stringer is out ill. So I'm covering for the both of them this evening. And then the second-string Public Works Director is over there in my chair tonight, so we'll arm wrestle for who answers Public Works questions.
Okay, Wally Pitt.
Tonight. And then I also wanted to ask Deputy Chief Ben Moussa to come to the mic to talk a little bit about a program and a -- this is the Harvard Fellowship Program. I'd like to introduce Dr. Edward Kim, who is a visiting fellow from the Harvard Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center Fellowship in Disaster Medicine Program, right?
Yeah.
So Dr. Kim is here. Gabe, why don't you?
And I'm the third string, so. Gabriel Ben Moussa, I'm the deputy chief of training EMS for the City of Salem Fire Department. I'm honored to have Dr. Kim, who is a research fellow from the Harvard Fellowship in Disaster Medicine. Salem was, after an extensive process and talking to the board that runs the fellowship, Salem was selected as one of only three fire departments in the country to host doctors of Dr. Kim's caliber to do their weekly, well, week rotation, sort of shadowing EMS, fire, mercy management, and specialty teams. And we're kind of fortunate and happy to represent the City of Salem and be on that list. It includes also the White House Medical and Trauma Response Team, Boston EMS, FDNY, and then a department in Arizona, so that's about it. So Dr. Kim is here, and we just brought him to introduce him.
Wasn't expecting to speak. Thank you guys very much for hosting me. I'm a little under the weather, so I apologize for that. We're thrilled to be here to see how Salem deals with disaster planning, how your public safety officers deal with their day-to-day workflow, and just to see if what we can learn and that I can take back to our fellowship, what you guys do very well, and also what we can bring to the City of Salem and the Fire Department to see what you guys can improve on from a fresh set of eyes where I don't have any skin in the game. So again, thank you very much for having me, and thank you for taking the time.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. It's great. Okay. Time for the presentation? No. We're going to wait on the presentation for the person with the check to arrive. How's that? It makes it a lot more exciting when all the lists comes together at once. So we'll go to public comment right now. Okay, we'll begin with Dave Lear, followed by Will Posagate. Or Posegate, or however you take your pick.
And we'll kind of team up on this discussion. So again, good evening, Mayor Bennett and Council. David Lear from Mid Valley Garbage Recycling Association. Here as a representative of your local franchise haulers in the City of Salem. Wanted to come here today and talk a little bit about what's new in recycling. I know there was some information in a pre-work package. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but I thought what I'd do today is quickly talk in my three minutes here, as much as I can, about what's going on in the recycling markets. If you haven't seen the news, and okay, from Garten Services, he's the chief operating officer. He's here to talk about the processing of the materials here in the Salem market. For those of you who haven't seen in the news nationally as well as locally, China made some announcements, started in 2013 with what was called the Green Fence. And basically, they told Americans that it was time to clean up your recycling, or we're not going to accept it any longer. This went along for about three and a half years until it finally came to the point where China said, we're going to start a new initiative called the National Sword, which was implemented in 2017. And then ultimately, it came to the fruition that effective January 1st of this year, China quit accepting low-grade post-consumer plastics and unsorted paper. So basically, all plastics, we all used to call number 3 through 7s, and mixed waste paper, they've no longer accepted. So what does that mean? So again, they banned all of unsorted mixed waste paper, mixed plastics, and they also created new contamination thresholds. And again, why they did all this stuff, to be quick here, I'm trying to give as much information as I can, is they used to take over our material and our bales. We had, from the West Coast, because we had lots of shoe boxes coming back from China, there was cheap freight going back. So it's really what fostered our co-mingle program that you see today. We're able to get our products back to China where they could, you know, with their low labor and their, and all their factories, they could pick through our bales of plastics and mixed waste paper and find some high-grade materials that we missed in our processing facilities. Well, China has, with their own new standards with labor wages and their emissions on their dirty facilities, that's down to 1 minute. So anyway, I'll talk quick. So they're new for 2018. They've got some new contamination thresholds. It used to be about 1.5%. It's down to 0.3%, which basically, there's no equipment in the United States that can meet this threshold. Quickly, so while I have lots of other, you can ask me questions. I'm here tonight because you're going to be the first to hear about the communication plan effort with Marion County. All the 20 cities will be notified with DEQ that in Marion County and Salem, we will, we are discarding some mixed waste paper and plastics through a concurrence program with DEQ. We will be modifying the curbside recycling program, and you're here tonight to be the first to hear about it before it starts being released to the press. But because of these market conditions, in an effort to keep rates from rising, we're trying to change the program, clean up the contaminants, because again, while China has told us, we're not going to take your material anymore, we as consumers and individuals need to do our best to make sure our recycled cart isn't our garbage cart.
Thank you. Do any of you have any questions that you want to ask at this point? Yes.
I was curious to see with the material that you put out, the shredded paper not being eligible for the recycle bin, and I understand that's the different mixed paper varieties. Is that something that you're pursuing for possibly with youth with compost, or nope, just straight into the garbage, huh?
We are, and Will could talk about the process. Garten has a services where they will collect it. All the haulers, our depots will collect the shredded paper. But no, from a compost perspective, they could take it if it was limited quantities. But what we want to make sure doesn't happen is all of a sudden, now you say, well, put all your mixed waste paper in your compost bin, and in six months from now, we're dealing with the same problem as our current co-mingle recycled cart, and we've got everything else in the yard debris bin now. But Garten Services does have a service where they will pick up shredded paper, or you can drop it off.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, are you going to speak?
I can. I was just going to say that the process, the, is shredded paper recyclable? Yes. Is it recyclable when you put it in your cart? No, because it falls through the machinery. Yes, it's paper. I would love everybody to come to our Garten Services and see what the machinery is, because you'll change what you put in your cart. So if you're going, if you have shredded paper, you can bring it to us. If you're a business, we can probably pick it up if you're on a route already. But it's just a matter of the process itself. It just gets thrown away anyway if you put it in your blue bin.
And Will, could you say your name again?
Yes, Will Posagate.
Okay. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this a temporary situation, or is there an end in sight to this? I mean, I'm a master recycler, and it just makes me sick to think about throwing recyclables away. I just, I'm hoping that there's an end in sight.
Yeah, you know, it's, we've been having these calls with DEQ, and I have to tell you, DEQ's actually been amazing in this process. We've been having calls since October, weekly calls, and, you know, to have DEQ, these people have been involved with recycling for 20 years, to talk about this, it turns their stomach, too. But they've understand what we've done. You know, we have no domestic markets for a lot of our product, and that's, you know, we pushed everything out of the West Coast because of the shipping. But yes, they, the way the concurrences work, you're going to hear the term of concurrents. A concurrent is something that DEQ has issued to cities, processors, haulers, when they, when the cost of recycling becomes more than solid waste. And that's what we currently have here in Marion County, is a, Garten actually has a concurrent approved by DEQ. All 20 cities were notified last week. In the state of Oregon, there are 16 areas that have concurrences to temporarily dispose the material. That short-term, long-term, DEQ's put together some aggressive action plans, working with everybody in the state to figure out how we can come up with creative capital programs where we can influence manufacturing to start doing something with the product locally. I mean, this stuff's not going to happen overnight, but the discussions about, we got to, you know, we need to be able to take care of our own material are occurring at the high level, and they really are looking for people to come up with opportunities and grant availability to start manufacturing where we can take care of our own products.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming down. Two questions, one being, looking at the list of things I now should throw in the garbage. Is it, people should start throwing them in the garbage right now because you're amassing a mountain somewhere?
Yes. Unfortunately, that's the case. It has been for a little while. We did what we could. There's only a certain market for some of this stuff, and for some of the stuff, like the 3 through 7s, yes, we're shipping out mixed plastic bales to other countries. For a long time, China, now to other countries since they're not taking it. We don't know for sure with 100% accuracy that all of that is getting recycled, for instance. Maybe they're pulling out all our 5s, your butter tubs, your yogurt tubs, maybe, and maybe they're throwing the rest away. So, or in the ocean or someplace. So unfortunately, right now, it's best to throw it away. And maybe if everybody's throwing it away, it'll hit their conscience, and they will vote with their dollars, maybe stop buying it, or maybe some of the manufacturers will figure out other ways to package the stuff. I mean, we've just been buying it willy-nilly because we have this easy place to put it. We don't have that anymore, so it's time to rethink.
If I can just do a follow-up on that then as well, because it took forever to train people on whether what tubs could go in, and can the lid go in with it or not, depending on what type of tub or carton. Is it our intent with the expansion of a sorting facility then to try to get those items back into the recycle stream? And if we're training people to get them out, how long is it going to take them to actually not put them in there? And then if, once you try to turn them around again, I think people will be massively confused.
Yes. They're confused now.
To bold, you know, to help with this is, you know, there has been a nice list put together from the Oregon Refuge Recycling Association. DEQ's kind of, they've bought off on this list. It really does simplify what used to, what should be recycling. You know, we've all, you know, believe it or not, our third highest component of material is garbage in our recycle bin. People throwing garden hoses, diapers. So as we talk about what we're, you know, putting in our bin, it So, so there, so as we talk about what we're, you know, putting in our bin, we need to clean up what's in our bin right now. Once we get, and this has been the message very clearly from DEQ to everybody, is let's clean up what we currently have, then figure out how we can get better about finding domestic markets, so we can make sure we get back to adding commodities. So while you see shredded paper come out right now, it's not the bulk of the material that's in the bin. It's, you know, the third largest, you know, qualifier is, like I said, garbage. So we just need to do our best, you know, bad, good of a co-mingle program is, you know, in a rate structure that it, you know, people want to get to the smallest can size for pricing, and then everything else goes in the blue cart. And we've got, we have to change that.
Thanks. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Nanki has just given me some information that I want to check with you guys as well as what he said, and that was respects to the shredded, the shredded paper. You know, I said it in aside to him, that just means don't shred paper. Well, I'm a lawyer, and in my legal business, I do shred a lot of paper, and Councilor Nanki said, just put it in a, in a paper bag. Is that correct? Can you take shredded paper and put it in some other container, other recyclable container, and then use it?
I suppose you could. If you put it in a paper bag, it'll just fall out though.
Yeah, but okay, a closed, a closed top container.
But don't the handles get caught?
Yeah, the problem is that grocery bag doesn't fit with the nice white paper, so it's not exactly the same material. So grocery bag is more like card, I mean, a paper grocery bag is more like cardboard.
Okay. So that's still problematic, is what I'm hearing.
It is. People put it in plastic bags too, and that's a whole other issue.
Yes, it is. And one more question.
I'll just have Garten come pick it up locally.
Appreciate it.
Well, he's, he's got a business going on, not a personal home. One more question if I may, Mr. Mayor. Is this, the fact that these materials aren't going to China, and something may happen to them, they may go in the landfill, or could this potentially lead to some more burning of this type of stuff at the county facility?
Well, I'll answer, and I have a county official here. This material is not the optimal material for burning.
That's why I was asking.
That's, so no, it is, the material that's being under the concurrence right now is going to Coffin Butte to be landfilled, because again, because of the plastics isn't a conducive material. Now, the mixed waste paper, maybe, but again, our, you know, we're operating at capacity at Cabana anyways.
Councilor Cook?
Thank you. So with a city the size of Salem, is there best practice for, what percentage are you aiming for that we can actually take care of within the county or within the region to meet our own needs? Assuming that you're able to get in a recycler, a processor that can handle some of these things locally, is there precedence for that in this region, or is just everything out of the country?
This, well, the precedent's been, this is, it's affecting the whole country, but the West Coast specifically. Yeah, just because we've been so co-mingle. Cart where we put all our material in one bin dominant, the Midwest has kept a lot of source-separated recycling programs. You probably remember recycling back 20 years ago, maybe five or six different bins, you know, we really kept it separated. The East Coast, you know, everyone's done some things a little bit differently. The West Coast has been hit the hardest by, just because of what we do put in our co-mingle. Marion County's been a leader, we're going to continue to be a leader, and that's part of the reason we've partnered with our processor Garten, we've partnered with Marion County. We've got some great things that are going to happen with communication. We're going to get out in front of the cities like this, and the other cities of Marion County, and we're going to get back to being the leader in recycling, but we're going to make, you know, we know what we need to clean up as far as the trash, and clean up our material, and then we'll work with our partners here, Garten, to make sure we're getting the value that we can out of our materials we produce.
Thank you.
So I, just so I understand, this, this is going out to your customers now? Is that what's happening next?
Well, I, believe it or not, to show you how quickly things have turned, since we produced that, it's changed. You know, it's, this is the biggest discussion we have going on, not just with the Marion County, but DEQ at the state level. This market's changing so fast that if we go print something, it could actually be, it could be invalid in less than a week.
Well, then, when will we, as, as those of us who've recycled for a long time, when will we get that definitive description of what goes where?
So we have a communication put together now, we're letting you know about it tonight. We're working with Marion County on a broader Marion County release, hopefully be something soon.
Will I be starting to then take certain things to a, a different kind of, like we used to do, take them to recycling centers, or how will this?
No, the consumer, it'll still be at your cart, here's your list, just, just make sure.
Just more in the garbage can?
Just make sure if it's not on this list, it goes in your garbage container.
Okay, okay.
You may want to think about hitting them. I have, I'm a family of four, I have a very small garbage can and a big recycling bin, and I'm very proud of my one garbage sack per week.
Yep.
It's changing.
It's changing, isn't it?
Your milk cartons and your, and your clamshells have to go in your trash, so.
It's interesting, we'll also be talking about smaller garbage cans tonight as well, for a fairly minimal savings.
Every other week.
And every, every other week. It's, I think you're telling us, don't make too many quick decisions, right?
Correct.
I don't know if that fits with the association plan for you, but you may want to, yeah, okay, great, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to presentations. Right?
Yes.
Okay. In March 2015, the council created the City Streetlight Utility, which set fees to fund operation maintenance and expansion of the city's streetlight system. Fees began being collected in August of 2015. You remember when those emails started, don't you?
Yeah.
Okay. The first project funded with these fees was to upgrade the existing streetslights with LED lamps, which use 50% less energy and lasts four times longer than the older high-pressure sodium lights. Really pleased tonight to have guests from PGE, right? Or Energy Trust, okay? And I'm going to let you, if you don't mind, introduce yourself, and how are you?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Good evening, my name is Jay Ward, I'm the Senior Community Relations Manager at Energy Trust of Oregon. For those of you who don't know us, Energy Trust is a nonprofit independent organization. We serve the customers of Portland General Electric, Pacific Power, Northwest Natural Gas, Cascade Natural Gas, and Avista, and help them try to save and generate clean energy. We do this because the cheapest energy is the energy you don't use, and the cleanest energy is the stuff that comes off our rooftops, wind turbines, and irrigation canals, name a few technologies. Through our programs, utility customers like the city of Salem have saved $2.7 billion on their utility bills since 2002. Salem is one of nearly 36,000 organizations, companies, municipalities, businesses, and industrial facilities that have worked with Energy Trust. I want to thank you for the opportunity to appear this evening and to celebrate the city's ongoing work to reduce energy use. If today's presentation feels a little bit like Groundhog Day, it's because we were here last year, in May, to celebrate the work you've done at your Willow Lake facility. This evening, Energy Trust is pleased to present another ceremonial check, in this case for $390,006 in recognition of the city's efforts to upgrade its streetlights from high-pressure sodium to more efficient, brighter LEDs, says the mayor. Stands for light emitting diode, if anybody's, you know, got a homework assignment. This project by itself will save the city over 2.6 million kilowatt hours, basically taking 223 cars off the road, if you're looking for an energy equivalent. That's a big number, it's probably not the biggest. For saving that energy, will save the city over $207,000 in 2018, and again in 2019, and again in 2020, for the life of those LEDs. That makes it about a three-year payback on the project. If you add up all the major energy-saving projects the city is doing, the city's annual bill savings come up to $670,000 a year. Of course, projects like these don't happen by osmosis. They take visionary council, dedicated managers and skilled technicians. I'd be remiss if I didn't call out some of them this evening. Peter Fernandez, the Public Works Director, you moved out of, off the stage. He led the initiative to upgrade the streetlight system. To my right, Brian Martin, the city engineer, managed the program requirements. And then two of the members couldn't be here this evening. Kevin Hotman was unable to attend, as was Paul Beals, the management analyst, who managed the design and construction of the relamping projects. And the contractors who helped design and install the lights, DK Associates and EZ Electric. And lastly, I wouldn't be much of a colleague if I didn't call out Christina Skellinger of our program, if you can stand up and take a bow. I'm lucky, I get to do this on occasion, but she does all the hard work. I know you have a full agenda before you this evening, and I know it's impolite to filibuster as one friend's, so I'm going to take this moment to present this big check for $390,000, $390,006 to the city of Salem. And I think I said this last time. I won't tell you to spend it wisely, because you already did.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. I'll let you take that with you, I don't want to have to carry that home. Well, thank you very much. Congratulations to Public Works for all your good work on this. Okay, we'll go back to public comment. Reed Carlson, followed by Dave, whoops, Dave, you signed up twice. Reed Carlson, there you are.
Good evening, I'm here to simply introduce myself to the community. I was hired by Mid Valley Garbage Recycling Association to be the marketing and recycling coordinator, and my main task is to inform and educate the people of Marion County about our contamination issue. And as the program changes roll out, we expect to see a lot of confusion and possibly more contamination, so I am here to, like I said, formally introduce myself and make myself as approachable and possible to communicate with, to answer any possible questions that you might have.
How soon, Reed, will we get the picture that tells us what to put in the cans?
I've made three changes to that today, so hopefully those will stop changing.
We, I think all of us are going to be very interested in how this finally ends up, so that we can maximize our, our service here and the dollars we're spending on garbage and recycling services. So we're counting on you to, as soon as you can lock her down, send it out, okay?
All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Kaser?
Thank you. So one question, what, what can we do to help you when we're talking with the community? Like, what's something that we could do? What's the message you want us to carry forward to the community right now?
Well, a lot of what we're saying is, keep items empty, clean, and dry. We like that phrase, because it really makes sure our items that are being recycled are recyclable.
Really?
And another phrase that we like is, when in doubt, throw it out. And this will really be valuable in the future, when we have these program changes, and if you don't know, and you're too afraid to ask, which, again, I want to make sure people aren't afraid to ask and call your local haulers or the association to answer any questions. So.
Councilor Cook?
Thank you. Will you be doing any outreach upstream to talk to the, maybe, middle, not just the manufacturers, but the people maybe generating a lot of the waste that ends up in the consumer recycling slash trash bin, when it should be in the trash bin? Trying to educate to maybe move away from the small clamshells, which I was surprised to see in there on the photo, and towards another more sustainable option?
Well, I, we are going to plan on outreach, providing outreach to middle schools and elementary school students, and that's to help them understand more about what is recyclable, so they can pass that on to their parents. However, we are constantly learning about what the best method of education and sort of outreach there is.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lear, keep it short, you get your second bite at the apple here, you're on your second.
I actually signed up for the 20-gallon discussion on this one, so you want me, you want to start with that now? And yes, we, there are some great stories about companies that are stepping up, mandating supply chain changes with plastic pallets right now, they're doing on their own, so you're going to see, so, sorry, I wanted to help answer, Reed. So here to talk about, I know there's, from our rate review cases, that there were some discussions about 20-gallon every other week service. And of course, it was something the association, all the haulers said that we would entertain a pilot project. Well, that was in October. We're still interested in entertaining a pilot project, but what's, it's just become forefront to us right now is the recycling markets. To be full transparent, between last year and this year at time, January through August, we're at a plus $1 to a plus $25 a ton for recyclable materials. Today, we're minus $87 a ton. If we continue on this trajectory, it'll be a $1.2 million loss for the haulers, just year over year, on recyclable materials. So I don't want to discount a pilot program that we signed up for. Just one of the things that when I talked to Ryan, that we're, you know, as we start taking a look at it, we want to make sure that those who participate in every other week program, sign a certificate, certification, saying that they will recycle correctly, you know, that their carts will have good, clean material in it, not the garbage that should be in the garbage can. So that was my update on the 20-gallon, you know, we're still here to commit to what we said we would do. It's just taken, taken a little change of focus for us, as the markets have changed so dramatically in six months.
When do you think you'll be back with a proposal through our franchise agreement?
We've offered, we've submitted a number.
It's in now.
We have. What we're trying, what we're discussing now is, who is the pool? What's the pool of people in the pilot to try it? And so that's where we're currently.
Are you looking at it as one company doing it, or how are you?
No, we actually, you know, we first started, we first started talking, we talked about one company, and then we talked about, maybe do we use some people who actually voiced an interest in it? Because obviously, from the review period, there was a number of constituents that said, hey, we like a 20-gallon every other week service. So maybe what we do is, those people who said they were interested in the program, so that might encompass all the haulers, and that gives all the haulers a, you know, a stake in the pilot project. So we're, you know, we're entertaining different ways, we're just trying to see where, which direction the city wants.
Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple, three, four or five questions. So.
I know, it's three.
So I guess I'm confused, because I thought that you already had a pilot project going in South Salem, that's what I was told by staff a few weeks ago, when I inquired about this. And I thought you were coming tonight to roll out the plan citywide. So can you help clarify that for me? That's my first question.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, we never had a plan, I mean, it was always talked, that we'd talk about a pilot project, that we'd start it, and we had just started conversations really about, you know, 45 days ago, probably, to be specific about, you know, what should the plan look like.
Ryan, do you want to answer, Councilor Hoy, as well?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and city councilors. My name is Ryan Zink, I'm the franchise administrator for the, for the city. The communication that I provided, and I apologize if there was any miscommunication, was that, as I was working with the haulers, and we were looking at what that pilot would be, initially, there was one hauler who had stepped up and said that they would be looking at that, and would, would be initiating and starting that pilot, but that pilot had not started yet. We were hoping then to bring that information report to council. In the meantime, as Mr. Lear described, that, that project has expanded to, all the haulers will be providing that, and then in your, your report this evening has more of the detail about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Could you talk to us a little bit about how you arrived at the 13% discount for the 50% reduction in service? I'm kind of confused by that.
Well, really, it's, you know, high-level math, it's, it's a, from a 23.55 for a 20-gallon to a 35-gallon, 26.65, that's a 13% difference. So we really, you know, we took away 15%, you know, we took away 15 gallons, and figured out, you know, the, the last five gallons would be stuffed in there a little bit harder. So to give you a rough math, that's how we came up with the 13%. You know, you're still on an every other week program, you, your cost, your truck doesn't cough half as much, your labor isn't half as much, your carts aren't half as much, your routing software's not half as much, you're still driving by that house, whether you stop and pick up that 20 gallons or 22.5 gallons is the incremental number. So it's that increment from a 20 to a 35 gallon, which is 13%, we just went the other way.
Okay. Any others, counselor?
Not for now.
Not for now, okay. Councilor McCoy?
So, if, if, if your informational program works, and they start putting more in the garbage, less in the recycling, and so they're filling these garbage less in the recycling, and so they're filling these garbage cans up, is this pilot program doomed to failure if your, if your informational program works?
You know, no, I think there's, there's potential for the program, you know, it's not a very widely, it's not a, it's not a regional program. There are communities that have it, but even those communities that have it, it's less than a percent of a percent participation, you know, it's pretty tough to get by on twenty gallons every other week, you know, unless there is some strong recycling. But again, there are those few people, there are those consumers out there who will utilize the program and, you know, don't generate that, that much solid waste. So, you know, that's, like I said, we're anxious to get the material cleaned up so we can see what we can truly offer.
Okay, great. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you. I wanted to give my colleagues an opportunity. So, as I talked about last fall when you were here, and I want to just reiterate it tonight, you know, we have the garb, we have the highest garbage rates in the state, and I recognize that that is not, it's unique to Marion County because of our burner situation, which is not on you at all. But I, I really want to encourage you to work with us to try to come up with some ways to reduce those rates, because I don't think that, you know, we're not even close to being the highest income in the state.
Yep.
And yet, we have the highest garbage rates, and I really want to work with you to try to resolve that and bring those back into alignment. So I'm hoping, this isn't necessarily for you, but maybe for the mayor and staff, I want to reiterate my, my suggestion that we have a meeting with the county commissioners to discuss this, the whole garbage burner issue. I know that we're constrained by the current law, but I'd like to work within that to try to come up with some ways to reduce these rates.
But again, it's, you know, recycling, the commodity price of the revenue from recycling has always been used to keep garbage rates down. So, again, that's showing the importance of this education plan. Let's clean up our recycling, get back to where we're, you know, it's a positive net for the processors and us, so we can help find ways to bring the rates down or not demand, you know, not need a three and a half, four percent increase. Understand and hear you.
Thank you. Very good. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of following up on what Counselor Hoy talked about, and I was going to ask this question of Mr. Zinke and item seven A, but I think probably I'd like to hear from you folks too, who are actually on the end of doing the work. And I look at the rate summaries for twenty gallons in Eugene is eleven dollars and eighty cents, and I presume that's every week pickup, but your proposal would be twenty dollars and forty cents for every other week. Do you have any understanding of why there's a different charge like that in Eugene?
I don't have the comparative, I, I could get it and I'll get back to you, I have all the comparatives, just to make sure we're looking, and again, is that, I don't know if that eleven dollar includes, with our twenty dollars that we're offering, that includes organics and co-mingle. So if you cut those services out on a program, you know, you're probably more looking like at the eleven, so I'd have to go look and see what that comparative is.
Okay, thank you very much, and maybe Mr. Zink can tell us when, at his part of the program.
Okay. Well, I'm sure we'll be revisiting this as time goes by, so you can at least get a sense of the questions that are out there right now. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Gary Kaidatz.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilors, my name is Gary Kaidatz, I live at thirty-seven ninety-seven June Avenue Northeast, Salem, Oregon. Down the street from me on Vaughn Avenue, there's two homes. This discussion you guys are having about garbage kind of fits right in with what I want to talk about. These two homes are just trash pits. They're supposed to have been, be cleaned up, but all they do is haul trailers back to Buy Mart and leave them, full of garbage and stuff. Or they fill up grocery carts and roll them down the street and take them to Buy Mart and leave them. One day, I come home from shopping, I hear a bunch of noise, I go outside, they're dragging about a thirty-foot trailer house full of garbage, four flat tires, drag it over, drag it into Buy Mart parking lot, unload it. I walked down there like I was just on a walk, trying to get the license number, they have the license plate bent up so you can't read it. As they dropped the trailer and drive off, burning the tires on a diesel duly truck, I tried to get the license number, I got the three nine five one, but couldn't get the letters on the pink. So anyway, the neighbor has a camera, he got it all on camera and everything. The police, we talked to the wrecking yard to come to pick up the trailer, they had to spend over a thousand dollars putting tires and wheels on that trailer to have it hauled up. The taxpayers are paying for that. Something needs to be done. I, I don't know, we've supposedly been working on this for months and months, I know it takes a long time to do stuff, but something needs to be done quicker.
Brady, do you wanna? Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilors, my name is Brady Rogers, I'm your Neighborhood Enhancement Division Administrator. There has been a lot of progress on the house next door to the Kaidatzes, I know they've been working on that. I know the one property on Vaughn that is owned by the older gentleman that's on the very limited income, that, I think he just has a few hundred dollars a month that he has as an income and is spending about a third of that trying to get stuff off. If there are other people that are taking things from a property and dumping them or dropping them off on another property, definitely, the police need to be called when that's going on. They need to be, if you witnessed a dumping of a motorhome, absolutely, call the police when you see it in progress.
You did call the police.
You did call the police.
Yes, Buy Mart did too, so did other neighbors.
Okay, that's the solution if somebody's dumping something, if somebody's committing a crime, we have to call them and then hold the people doing it responsible. In terms of cleaning up the property, we're doing what we can. I'm got a little, little time and some ideas in the top of my head, and I'm sort of piecing together something for that neighborhood, and working, sounding out things with police and Public Works and some parking enforcement folks. But beyond that, we're working every case as hard as we can in terms of the garbage and the junk.
Okay, thank you, Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I appreciate you coming down yet again, Mr. and Mrs. Kaidatz, I spent some time with you at your, standing in your driveway a few weeks ago and seeing all of the issues firsthand, and I know the staff is working diligently to try to address these various departments. I know the police department is on the folks on Vaughn Avenue and, as well as the code enforcement folks, and, and I know that we got an email I was mentioning to you just a little bit ago from the Public Works Director, putting, there will be no parking signs going up on, right on Coral Avenue, just right across from your house in the very near future, I'm not sure if we have a timeframe yet on those, but I know it'll be happening soon. So I, I know it's frustrating as, as you live there, but I do see a lot of progress happening too, so I appreciate your patience.
Okay, thank you very much. Tim Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Tim Tysler, by the way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries. I'm the new operations manager for Republic Services of Salem, just wanna, obviously tonight's a hot topic for recycling, so just wanted to introduce myself, and looks like we've got some change coming, and be looking forward to reeducating everybody on what is recyclable and going forward with the best ways of picking it up.
So the, it's all new people this time?
Yes.
Did you guys draw the short straws, what happened?
I guess so, yeah.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to spending some quality time with you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Yeah. Sandra Bennett, Sandra Burnett, I can barely read anymore.
Good evening, thank you for, for, for being here tonight. Sandra Burnett, six hundred Mission Street Southeast.
That's right.
Am I right?
Yes.
So I just have a very quick question for the council. On behalf of the ten cultural facilities, I'd like to bring back into focus the issue of the fifteen percent distribution for the TOT. This is designated support for the cultural facilities that make up the core of the cultural environment in Salem. We're requesting that fifteen percent to help year-round operations. The cultural facilities are the generators of cultural tourism, and cultural tourism in turn is a generator of funds for the TOT. So eight months ago, in July, we approached the council, there was a decision to have a work session, which we very much appreciated, but it has been eight months, and we feel in limbo. Our concern is that we, if we left much longer, it'll be too late for the next budget cycle. So we are really just requesting that this be addressed before the next budget cycle is formulated and cast in stone. Thank you.
The eight months, Sandra, I, I understand, the eight months really are the, part of the budget cycle, the city manager's putting together his budget based on everything he's heard, then we will take it up with the budget committee, then the council will take it up again, and your request has been duly noted, we've had a work session on it, and we just haven't worked the budget yet to, to get to that.
I may be mistaken, Mr. Mayor, but I do not believe we have had a work session. I think in fact, a while back, we had some sort of notification from the city manager that we were not planning on having a work session.
I thought you said we had one, Sandra.
It was scheduled, but.
Yeah, it was scheduled, and then, and then, the kind of.
Do you want a work session?
Yeah, I would like one, because it, this is, for a whole lot of reasons, I don't know, I'm getting nods from the rest of the council, so I don't know that I have to go into it too much, except to say that yes.
We will request a work session.
Okay. That's the way to, that's a good, good solution, I don't have to talk anymore, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
You can have comments.
Yes. You saved us five minutes.
Anderson wants a work session, we're having one.
Thank you very much.
Alicia.
Alicia Bay Gilbert House Children's Museum, and I was here to second what Sandra was asking, so thank you very much.
Very good. I'm just gonna finish these up, Jan, do you want, Kaidatz, do you wanna? Gary, you've already spoken.
Hi, everybody.
Do you need to speak again?
First of all, we do want to thank, and there's a bunch of you that have really helped us out. The no parking, which Counselor Hoy told us, it's gonna infect tonight, or this, soon. But anyway, but thank you, everyone, thank you. And that includes the police. And the house on twenty-two seventy-five has gotten much better, they're mowing, they here about, what, a week and a half ago, took down the tree that was all over the place, the shed is still up. And we did call nine-one-one one night about eleven-twelve, 'cause two people, two guys went in there, and they had to let them go because there's no TLC posted. Trespass, letter, a cassette. We need one of those on there, because the officers can't do a thing, as long as that isn't posted. But other than that, that is doing much better, and I don't have to touch on the no parking. Like I said, thank you, everyone, and Tony Martin as well, he was really good about it too, and stuff, but, so the only thing I need to add is the house on June and Vaughn, those two houses, twenty, thirty people a day, too many drug deals, too many, there's too many children, it's a health hazard. But again, thanks, everyone, for all that you've done so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Rogers.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, Councilors, I'm Doug Rogers, live at twenty-two fifty Brown Road Northeast. I am a, one of the directors on the Salem Area Mass Transit Board, I'm also Vice Chair of the North Lancaster Neighborhood Association. Now, I like to save many, and judging by that check with all those zeros, I can see that you do too. And this paper I was looking at, it's printed on both sides, I can see it doesn't matter if it's big or small, you care about saving many. So I've got a really small story and then some show and tell for you. When my wife told me one day, please turn off the light when you leave the bedroom, so we can save many, well, I thought she was nuts, seriously. And I can say that on TV because she was right. When we diligently, consistently followed the program, we saved many. Now, being in, being in NOLA on the board, I get packets like this, seven dollars and twenty cents. Now, if this is going out to me and the NOLA chair and eighteen other associations, one mailing could be as much as two, two-hundred-and-sixty bucks. And some might say, well, that's just a drop in the bucket. And I say, you've got enough drops in a bucket, and you have a pail full of many. So I'd really ask you to seriously consider having people opt in to get mail, if that's what they need. But I only need two or three of these pages, I can print them out if I can get online and look at it. Don't mail this to me anymore. And they're not always seven dollars and twenty cents, sometimes a dollar fifty or whatever, but consider that.
What are they, Doug? What is that?
This one I haven't even opened up yet, but a lot of times, it's things going on in the neighborhood.
Ah, okay.
You know, land use planning, not to throw anybody under the bus, I wouldn't do that being on the board.
Okay.
You know, and basically, that's it.
Alrighty.
Nothing earth-shattering, just thank you for letting me be here tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, very good. Maria Alacovo?
Alacovo. Alacovo.
Hi, good evening. I just wanna thanks my neighbor, they, I was invited from them. I live in that area on Fisher Road, I have five kids, they're young, and I'm a busy mom, they sometimes ask my kids to walk, so, because I'm cooking or the other siblings are sleeping. And I just wanna say, that area is very, kinda dangerous. I lived in there for two years, I wanna move out because I feel that is not a safe place for my kids. Thank you, everybody, and also thank you to my neighbors that, like they said, that house has been more clean, and also that, what is the street, Cora? Cora, it's, it's looking better. I cannot walk, my husband suffer from depression, and sometimes he wants to walk, but it's too dangerous. I mean, there's no lights, we need lights, really, we need a lot of lights in Fisher Road. We live in that, that part where there's no light, it's too dark. Sometimes, I mean, one day I almost ran into a lady, I got so afraid, it was raining and very dark. And when I ask my kids to walk home, I always check on them, are you coming, where you at? Are you okay? And we see the police, but that house really needs to go, I don't know, it's still dirty, it's not safe. And like two weeks or three weeks, I hear my kids, I, I had communication with my kids, and I know that like three, two weeks ago, it was a shooting and somebody killed a high school student in that area, and I was so afraid, my daughter walks, and I mean, there's two, two ways that she walks, one is in the house, the trashy house, I say, no, don't even think about walking that area. And the other choice that she has is like walking some apartments, and I'm so afraid that sometimes she walks in there, so I really want you guys to please keep in mind, we really need lights in that street, sidewalks also, but it's so expensive, but like my husband says, you know taxes, and he's so low, if we can put more taxes, they can do more stuff, but it's ridiculous, like in South Salem, they're doing this big wall, that they, I mean, that's, they don't need it, we need it. Like in Hatton, after they killed the guy, the city started putting the sidewalk, it's so sad that, I mean, you see somebody dying, and I just start walking, I know my neighbor lost the wife that was killed, I understand, like a year ago, and I really, please, please, want you to work on and put in at least lights. I know we need also sidewalks, because there's a lot of children in there waiting for buses, there's a lot of people there walking to Walmart or Mega Food to shopping, and I see a lot of people carrying bags, walking, it's, I mean, it really breaks my heart, and I just wanna bring pictures, all the pictures that I've been taking and bring it here. I need this, maybe you guys don't have a budget. I need some, maybe you guys don't have a budget to put a sidewalk, and I know it's a busy avenue, but I think it would help, you know, kids to be safe, waiting for the school bus, parents walking like me and my husband, that sometimes we want to walk, because there's not a park close to there. And there's no way, there's no choice but to walk. We need to get into a park and go to a closed park to walk.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much for coming down. And Councilor Hoy, your city councillor, is really working on those issues on Fisher Road, Vaughn Road, Coral, so we'll be keeping track of it. Whenever the Kytis come down, just come on down with them. They're kind of regulars here. David Dominguez-Lacobo.
My name's David. I give support to my neighbors and my mom. And I just wanted to say that my street is not safe, because there are a lot of homeless, no sidewalks, and a lot of people that sell drugs. It's not a safe environment, also because people, especially kids, run at risk of getting ran over. I have an experience of almost getting ran over, so please, help my street.
Thank you very much, David, for coming down, and we take very seriously what you've said. Thank you. Anthony... Oh, Behrens, there you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You just wanted to sign up?
I thought I was signing up for non-agenda items.
You were.
Oh.
You're up.
I was going to be here a lot.
Yeah, I'll tell you, take it when it comes, man.
Thank you. My name is Anthony Behrens, and I live at 1995 Woodland Hills Way in Salem. Feel free to come by here in the neighborhood. I have had the pleasure of meeting with some of you. I've sent you, I think, all of you emails, or a number of you emails. I am running for Marion County Circuit Court Judge, and so one of my campaign strategies, I guess, or one of the things that I like to do, is go around to each city council meeting, introduce myself, get my name out there, and I solicit feedback about the court, about the Marion County Circuit Court. And I like to listen to people's issues. I've recently started going door-to-door, so I've been getting earfuls, which is good, because hopefully, if I'm elected, there's things I can do to make the court better. So, I'm going to spell my name for the record. It's B-E-H-R-E-N-S, so it's a little bit different spelling. And so, if you go to my website, it's behrens4judge.com, you can find a lot of information about me there. And if you go there and you like what you see, you can also vote for me in May, and just remember to vote for the Bear, because that's my nickname, and it'll show up in the voter's pamphlet. And it's easy to remember, so. All right, I'm going to leave some cards, because I bought a lot of them, so I'm just going to leave them there, and people can pick them up if they're inclined.
Great.
Thank you.
Do we want to ask you any questions? This may be your last chance.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, we'll move along, then. Consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move the consent calendar with the following polls. Item 3.3A and 3.3D by Counselor Cook.
Second by Hoy.
So, what we have on the consent calendar, the minutes of the February 12 council meeting. Under resolutions, we have a property tax exemptions for qualifying nonprofits. At the last meeting, we granted those exemptions for several, and we now had to look at further criteria to make sure they met it. Catholic Community Services, Salem Self Help Fund, Housing and Cornerstone Apartments Limited All met the standards and now have the same tax exemption for low-income housing properties. Under action items, intergovernmental, well, there's an intergovernmental agreement with the Salem Kaiser School District. It authorizes the city manager to execute the intergovernmental agreement with the district and any amendments to it in order to provide police services within the district schools during the 2017-18 school year. Item 3.3C is the appointment of John T. Mercer as a municipal judge pro temp. And item 3.3E is a 2018 city council policy agenda in writing. It's right here. Nice looking online. It basically is telling you what the city, taking it out of our strategic plan, what the city council has opted to focus on for the next budget year, and it's in there. And so, I encourage everybody to read that and see where the city's heading.
Any comments, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, and we will go into public hearings.
The city council will now conduct a public hearing concerning the vacation of an alley at the site of the new police facility at the northeast corner of Commercial Street Northeast and Division Street Northeast. The criteria applicable to the proposed amendment are ORS 271.080 through 271.130 and SRC 255.065. Testimony must be directed toward the identified criteria or other criteria the person believed to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. The hearing will be conducted with the staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes per association for testimony. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time has expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anthony, you want to give the presentation?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Gamalo. I'm a senior transportation planner for Public Works, and I would like to enter the staff report into the record. This is a public hearing to consider a city-initiated vacation of an alley at the site of the new police facility. As you know, in May 2017, Salem voters approved a general obligation bond measure to build a new police facility at the northeast corner of Commercial Street Northeast and Division Street Northeast. An alley currently bisects that property, and the design of the new police facility requires that the alley be vacated prior to development. The alley is about 485 feet long, sixteen and a half feet wide, and covers 8,009 square feet. It is not presently needed for any public use. As described in the staff report, the vacation meets the criteria necessary for approval. And that concludes my report on this particular vacation. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them now. Also, I know Project Manager Alan Dannen is here tonight to answer any questions that would be more project-related. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions?
I have a second.
There's no public comment. Any questions? Unless there's somebody that really wants to get up on this.
Yeah, this was an easy one.
This wasn't. Okay.
Yeah, me, too.
A closed public hearing. Counselor Kizer, do you have a motion?
I do. I move staff recommendation.
Second by McCoy. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thanks for playing.
Thank you.
We'll move on to special orders of business. Let's do appointments to the Planning Commission first. Okay? You have your ballots?
Ballot number two.
I'm saying what?
Has the inclusion of Ashley Schweiger.
Right, she's on the list. You have a ballot that includes her.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I got confused last time when we had the Planning Commission, and I think that was because there were two open positions. And so, all we are doing this time is voting for one candidate. We're not ranking them or doing anything else. We're just voting one candidate on the ballot that has all five.
We will vote one until someone achieves a majority.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the majority, we have a majority, and that is for Ashley Schweiger. Okay? So, Ashley Schweiger, welcome to the Planning Commission. Thank you. And again, I want to mention to all those who applied, please keep your applications in. It was really an outstanding group this time. Well, it always is. This was particularly outstanding. Very good. Okay, we'll move on, oh, to Counselor Cook, 3.3A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this item.
You need to make a motion.
I would like to move staff recommendation, please.
Second by...
3.3A.
By Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion, go ahead.
This is the food for fines motion, and I just wanted to speak to it, because it's really such a wonderful program. Fines can really be a barrier as far as accessing services, especially for young kids, as there's the perfect storm of propensity to lose things in households, and also not necessarily having the availability to get to our library to return or check out items when they may need to be in. So, it's a really great example of partnership between Marion-Pope Food Share and of the work the library's doing to remove barriers. I just wanted to speak to it.
So, you take the kids' food instead of the fine? Is that how you're selling this thing?
Yeah, if you have a fine. And, you know, the fees have been raised within the last few years. The cost to replace the materials if they're lost has not kept up with the cost of actual replacement. So, the fines can get pretty up there.
Yeah.
So, to be able to bring in cans of food or things that are, as Counselor Hoy pointed out, there's a lot of need in our community, to be able to meet that need, reduce barriers, it's really a wonderful program, and I think it should be highlighted.
Very good. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. 3.3D, Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move staff recommendation, please.
Second by Hoy.
I just pulled this for the slurry seal surfacing. Again, highlighting the work between the city and the county. It's great when we can work together on these issues. And also, I know prioritization of streets and how we get around to the community is of great importance to me, especially in Ward 7. So, I had a nice talk with Director Fernandez and really enjoyed reading the staff report that mobility issues can be made worse when the roads are in worse condition. I'm trying to think of the best way to say that, especially as we're coming out of, hopefully, the worst of the weather for right now. And I also asked about the bike lanes and how we're prioritizing striping, if necessary, or being able to track alternative use on those, and I was very happy with the answer.
Great.
Thank you.
I want to add to that, that the slurry seal program also is a tremendous maintenance program. It means we add life to those streets without having to rebuild them, particularly after winters where we have a lot of underflow water that creates a lot of potholes and things. So, it's a great system. It really does seal those streets and protect them. So, we really appreciate this program. Counselor Naik.
Thank you. And we've done this before, I think, with Marion County. Was it for slurry seal? Because I had the same question. It's like Marion County working on Polk County streets.
Yes, Counselor, we actually, we've actually had these kinds of programs up for a number of years. Anytime we have money and we can partner with Marion County, and it's usually Marion County, I don't think we partner as much with Polk County, on this, on de-icing, on any number of things, then we look for every opportunity to do that.
Excellent. And the slurry seal program is great, and it was a shame when it went away many years ago, and it's good that we can actually re-implement that.
It's back.
Yep.
De-icing, just for a second. I know it has nothing to do with this. Did you use salt?
No, we do not use salt, and we were, we tracked that bill. Thank you for asking, Mayor.
You're welcome.
We tracked that bill very carefully and did not want to be included in the list of cities that had to use salt. We're very happy with magnesium chloride, which is what we use. It's better for the environment, better for cars, better for streets. So, we're pleased with that product, and we stay on top of it as much as we can, so that our streets don't ice up. So, we were happy to not use ice, to not use salt.
Not use salt. Great.
Thank you for correcting me on that. Flurry Boy was just saying, I thought you were talking about the sidewalks, so thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Information reports. Yes, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question on 6A, which is the transportation planning area for the Coysin Scenic Trail. And I just want to make sure that I get this right by looking at the various maps, the informal cemetery trail, and maybe part of these, yeah, just the informal cemetery trail is what's going through what used to be known as parcel four of the Dogwood Association. Okay. And then, I note the letter of intent to negotiate, so I think that's terrific. That was the only question I had on that. I do have a question on another item, but I'm happy to...
Go ahead.
Okay. And this is kind of just a comment on 6D, on the library bond and what's going on there. I don't know if this is possible or not, but with all the improvements to the roof, I would think this might be a time to look at installation of some sort of solar panels up there that might be appropriate. And so, I just ask that the Public Works and our third-level city manager, look at that, because I know there is, I think there is some, and I think we may have talked about this before, there's some obligation already on some sort of new constructions there may be to include that sort of stuff, and I don't know if this fits or not. But I'd really like it if, at the same time we're up there on the roof working, it's a south-facing site, and it's flat, and it seems like that would be a good spot to put up some solar panels and see how that could help us in terms of our energy, in terms of the environmental action plan, in terms of saving money on our, what we spend on energy.
So, the solar requirements for state buildings?
Okay.
But we'll take a look, anyway.
Okay. Thank you very much. You know, maybe we'll get another $390,000, oh, $390 and $6,000.
Six dollars.
Six dollars.
Six dollars. Yeah. Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Kizer.
Thank you. For item 6. C, just wondering if, Dan, you could speak to a bit about the appeal and what the public hearing process will be coming up?
Sure. And Norm can correct me where I'm wrong. So, this is a hearing's officer's decision. It's a combination of conditional use and a zone change decision. There has been an appeal filed. I believe the hearing will be tentatively set for city council for March 26.
Have we seen the grounds for the appeal yet, or will we see that? Or how does that work?
It'll be provided as part of the staff report. I don't know if their notice of appeal...
So last week, I was in a meeting with Marion County and the garbage haulers, and we are going to be, we're planning for this to be, because we're changing fundamental behavior, this is going to be a year-long campaign.
Right.
Marion County is putting together a communications calendar, and we're going to be using several different media types to communicate the information.
Okay.
Good.
And we're going to do our best to keep it as simple as possible.
Yes.
Because it can get complicated, so we're simplifying and simplifying again.
Okay. Great. Counselor Cook.
I really enjoyed the clean, empty, dry, when in doubt, throw it out. I know that was all you, Kenny.
I wish I could claim credit for that brilliance, but I can't. But yes, that's the kind of simplicity that we're going to be going for, something that just sticks in the brain.
Okay. Any other guests, Counselor? Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for Mr. Zink. I'm on the, on 6F. I'm looking for something a little bit more definitive on where we're headed with the pilot project in terms of dates and a plan. I know that, so I'm just wondering if you feel, keep us informed, does that moves forward? And hoping that we'll hear something sooner rather than later. And also, sort of the second part of that is on the renewal of the contract with the burner, which is kind of mentioned in your report, but doesn't really say anything else about it.
So I can talk to, talk about the pilot project, although I will defer any questions on the Covanna, the negotiations there to representative, we have here from Marion County, if you don't mind. On the, so in the report, we're looking at starting that program in April. So, and the rates that are anticipated are in there at that 13% reduction, as mentioned before. The next step that we had anticipated, unless additional direction from council, would be that we would start that pilot project. We'll be evaluating it, the successfulness of it, if you will, the utilization of it. Again, the aspect of recycling and maintaining the high level of cleanliness in the recycling and how well that goes. And then we would then come back to council with a proposal to either stop the program, stop the pilot, or roll that into and adopt, into our regular rate schedule and adopt the rate on that officially.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Anderson.
Stay there, Mr. Zink. Yeah. Yeah, please. Thank you. Mr. McCoy, my mother is in here, so Mr. McCoy.
Keeps you in line.
Yeah, reminded me of my manners. Yeah. I really am interested in the difference between every week rates for 20-gallon cans in Eugene, which is a city comparable size to ours. And I do see, and Mr. Gier indicated he didn't know, you know, what was included in that, but the information I have says there is no yard debris service included in Eugene, but that you can add $3.74 on top of that if you want yard service. You know, and even adding $3.74 is still going to get us up to about $15.
Sure.
And I look at Springfield, which is $11.95, and I don't see that there's any indication of yard debris. So that's kind of a, and maybe it is all due to the burning garbage in Marion County, but if it's possible, when you come back, I'd like a further report as to why the franchise fee here is so much more than another comparable city in the valley.
Sure.
And I also kind of agree with, I think Counselor Hoy has stated this, that, you know, is that, that's not much of a reduction, and I understand how the 13% was provided at. And yes, the garbage trucks go by there, and yes, they're paying the fee for the labor and stuff, but if you're not stopping to pick anything up, you're saving time on the route, and you're saving the dollar amount you're spending on your drivers and the other material. I would include probably fuel if it's a difference if you stop and pick it up than it is if you drive by. So I just think this is a whole thing that it would be good to explore a little more. Thanks.
Counselor Nicky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to add on to that piece, we have water and sewer rates that have a high fixed cost to them as well, and we essentially charge people based on that the water is there and available 24/7, and so that's where a big piece of that price comes in. As far as, you don't get a 50% reduction if you go to 50% of service, just like people who use 50% less water probably don't even get a 13% discount.
I was thinking about that one there. Yes, Counselor.
This is not a response to, this is on a different one.
Sure.
Yeah. Which is what we just got, 6I, I think. I have to put on my glasses to make sure that's not L. Yeah, 6I, not L. And the city attorney sent us an email about this, which was very helpful, but just so anybody who sees this understands, my understanding is this is just, it's an informational item that will help us in our deliberations when we reconsider that matter on March 26.
Any assistance would be incidental.
Okay. Well, even incidental assistance we could use, but I mean, what's the?
But to clarify, this is a land use decision that you typically get every council meeting, and this is just another one, but it's related to the reimbursement district, so I wanted to point that out to you.
Okay, I see. So it's not, it's not necessarily, you know, I just got it this evening at this meeting and haven't had time to even scan it, much less peruse it. So.
It will play into your decision as we consider that reimbursement district, though.
Okay, yeah, but it's only incidental to the issue that will be in front of us in March. Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments on, okay, we're going to move to first reading of ordinances.
Ordinance Bill Number 218, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 5,500 block of Skyline Road South annexed to the city of Salem prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire District, Fire Protection District, excuse me.
Okay, let's see who's got this one. Counselor Hoy.
It's my word.
He was corrected. That was the addition that came out.
Sorry. Okay, Cook.
I would like to move staff recommendation.
Okay. Second. Second by Kizer. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll go to second reading.
Ordinance Bill Number 118, an ordinance vacating an alley located near the northeast corner of Commercial and Division Streets Northeast. Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nicky?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay. Our notice passes. And we're to the final public comment. Is there anyone that wanted to comment that didn't get an opportunity to sign in or wanted to comment? All righty, then we are adjourned.